Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call those Orangeburg County Council Meeting of July 2nd, 2018 to order. We're going to ask Councilman Wimbley to give us a moment of thanks before we proceed.
Phil, about me and pray. Father, we thank you for the building of this day. Lord, as we come together today to discuss the business of this county, we pray that the thing that we say and do might be pleasing your side as well as for the betterment of citizens of our county. Father, we just ask now to go with this first of this day. That precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I hope each and every one have had the opportunity to look at the June 18th amendments and have read it, and if there's any correction or notation, please note it. If not, could I get a motion in a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a correction to the minutes, but I haven't got mine. Since one council member was absent at our last meeting, it should show that when the vote was taken, it should have been motion, care, at seven zero, zero instead of six zero. It's like the writer Alexander Pope says, "It is human to forgive divine," because we have the best clerk of the council there is.
Thank you so much. Any other?
Just throughout.
Okay. All right. It has a moving second that the minutes be received as made, except for those notation of that has been said by the vice chair. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, ayes have it, and a motion is carried. Thank you so much. Again, we welcome you to our meeting this evening and this afternoon. And as always, we have public comments of two areas on our meetings. For those who may not have attended before, we have public comments of agenda items and we have public comments of other matters. Public comments of agenda items mean there are any items on the agenda. If you want to make a comment about it, you may approach the podium and do so. If there is a public hearing on that agenda item, like item one, we'll wait until we get to the public hearing part before you come before council. The other part of it is public comments of other matters. That means anything that you want to bring before council, at that time, you may bring before council. The floor is now open for public comments of agenda items only.
Agenda items?
Agenda items only. Remind us if there's a public hearing on that item, wait until that time.
I'm Glenn A. Senior. I live at Southwest Harris. Item number six, about the call out. We oppose the call out. The lowest Chuck, Chuck Callens, we oppose him. He wants to fill the call out, and we don't want to be rezoning. We do not want to be rezoning. And right into Southwest Harris. I've got some pictures if you want to see them.
Mr. Richard Yollin had a meeting on that.
We had a meeting, but the zoning had a meeting.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, send your back here, Mr. Yollin.
Yeah, I.
Plan Commission report for 1225 Camry Road. This is.
They disapproved it. It's at the room, but I don't know whether it was final or not. I figured I'm back today.
Well, it's back up now.
It's back to y'all, but I mean, y'all decided that, right?
Right.
So, I mean, I didn't want to jump the gun, but I wanted to say something when I got something. I need to wait.
No, you right. You did right there. You did right there. We appreciate you doing anything else you want to say now.
That's it. I cut the fish to, I think we bought last time, we got some fish and I cut some more.
Yes, sir.
I'm Paul Newman. I live at 133 Thomas Street in Southwest Harris, and I too oppose the rezoning of that lot. And one of my reasons is I'm afraid it would open up a can of beans where my next door neighbor might want to open up a garage. And we've already, if you already had rezoned one lot and you're kind of opening up the can of worms to over to rezone another lot.
We got too many people out here in all of it.
Our car's being sold there now?
Pardon?
Our car's being sold there now?
No. No. I think he is a wholesaler. His cars in his fenced area, but he's a wholesaler of cars, and he wanted to sell cars off the lot.
He wanted, he wanted to take it to business. He wanted to get a business license, and he had to rezon to get business license. And we, we're against that. We don't want to be rezoned. It's been a howling, I've been out there 55 years, and these other people have been there 50, 55 years. Southwest Harris is right on the front, right next to my son. About a half, it looks like about a half a lot.
Anybody else? We got you. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number four?
Number four.
Yes. I just want to make a correction again to the Plan Commission. My name is Andy Jackson. I'm Robert Jackson's wife. That, the address needs to be corrected. It's 1523 Greg Street, and it is for the purpose of auto repair, only not selling up vehicles.
I didn't hear you, young lady.
Okay, it is, the address needs to be corrected.
You say?
1523?
1523.
Right. And Greg Street, and it is for the purpose of repairing, only not selling up vehicles.
If not, we will close the public comments of agenda items and open the public comments of other matters. Hearing none, we will close the comment portion of our agenda, and we will go into our regular agenda. First out, when the regular agenda is an audience, the third reading, and the public hearing, and it's an audience authorizing an amendment to those certain agreements for development of a joint county industrial park for establishing, for establishments of an economic development fund used for the purpose of economic development. For those who haven't been to previous meetings, the non-secrators, give them a brief of what this is all about, and then we'll open the floor for public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a joint county industrial park that is done through economic development, and it is allowed by the state statute that allows us to work with other counties to create these parks for tax purposes with economic development incentives that are given to businesses and industry, and all due to the attorney for Orangeburg County and economic development, if you need more information.
Anybody have any more questions before the attorney is with council? Now, the floor is open for public hearing. Anybody from the public have anything that they would like to, any questions or comment on this item? Hearing none, we will ask for a motion and a second for third and final reading on this audit, please.
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Mr. Eric Wimbley, that we have third and final reading on this audit. And so, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, and the motions carried. Item number two is an audience and third reading also, and item two and three is related to the same project, which is Project Paris. One of them is the audience, and another is the industrial park conclusion. An audience authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between Orangeburg County and Project Paris, providing for a payment of special social revenue credit and other matters related there too. Item three is also an audience authorizing an amendment to the amended and reinstated agreement for development of a joint county industrial park dated 17th of May 2010, so as to include additional property in Orangeburg County for Project Paris as part of the joint county industrial park and other matters related there too. Both of these items are for Project Paris, and both of them have public hearing. The floor is now, first, do y'all have anything to add to that?
I have nothing.
Do y'all have anything to add to that?
I was just going to say the minimum investment involved is $10 million. Minimum new jobs, 15. There's going to be 30% SSRC, and it'll be included in the whole county industrial park.
Thank you so much. We've heard the summary of it by the attorney. The floor is now over public hearing on both of these items. If anyone has any questions or comments at this time, you may approach the podium. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for item two and three for third and final reading.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Billy Oins, and second by Mr. Ray Fabelas, that we pass these two items for third reading. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Item number four is a resolution by the Plan Commission, and this is the consideration of a request from Robert R. Jackson to rezone property located at 1523 Greg Street, item of Orangeburg, tax map number 03-16-05-015, from residential general district to commercial general, for the purpose of repairing vehicles.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The Plan Commission met on June 13, 2018, to discuss this request from Mr. Robert Jackson of the property located, as noted, and has been established, 1523 Greg Street, which is Council District Seven. It's requested to go from residential general to commercial general. The property was commercial in the past, it was burned, and wasn't rebuilt. Owner wishes to reestablish the auto repair business. Neighbors came in support of the request, and there was no opposition. The Plan Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to you as council.
Council, you heard the, let's see, the information from the Plan Commission, and you've heard the summary from the administrator. Do you have any question or concern?
Let me, I think Mr. Jackson called me. I'm not sure. I believe he did. Was that Mrs. Jackson who spoke a few minutes ago?
Yes.
Was that a dead end in the street down there? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. I don't oppose as long as it's maintained correctly, because sometimes we have garages that we repair cars, and they get to be pretty junky. And I just hope that we don't deteriorate the community, but keep it in good shape. It's not the best community I've seen in this town yet, but I think it can be improved. I hope you go in there with intentions of improving the communities.
Any other? Mr. Oins, would you give me a motion and a second if you want to?
I move to approve. Item number four.
Sir. Moved by Ms. Billy Oins, the Councilman from.
Village.
And second by Mr. Livingston, that we pass this resolution as recommended by Plan Commission. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Item number five is an audience first reading by Todd Lohney. This is an audience of the County Council of Orangeburg amending the zoning map of the unincorporated Orangeburg County to change the zoning designation for the real property described as the tax map number 0316, dated from residential. The first one was resolution, and this is the audience from first reading for the same item.
It's not necessary, Mr. Chairman, but the council voted to approve.
Again, this is the first reading by Todd Lohney for the audience of the resolution that we just passed for the changing it. We got two more readings. Could I get a motion and a second for first reading by Todd Lohney? Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Mr. Johnny Ravenell, that we approved this one by Todd Lohney. All in favor, please let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Item number six is one that you were relating to, which was opposed, and it was also opposed by the Plan Commission.
Yes, sir, it's true. Number seven would be one you didn't need.
Right, yeah. Six, six and seven, which was both related to the same. One was a resolution, and one was an audience, and the Plan Commission has voted to deny that request. The council, you have any change of differently with that? If not, those two items will be, do we, we, the attorney, do we need, we don't need to vote on those, if we deny, do we need a motion? Do we need a motion?
I think that you should on the resolution.
Okay. On the resolution? Okay. Can I get a motion and second for not passing the resolution?
I move that we deny the request. Second.
Moved by Ms. Smith, I mean, Ms. Fabelas, that we, and second by Ms. Smith, that we denied the request for the resolution on that property at Cannon Bridge Road in Dover, tax map number 0154-11-02008. All in favor, please let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Item seven is not necessary because you upheld the no vote.
Right.
So, there's no need to change the zoning designations.
Number seven, just dive there.
Right, right. Okay, now, my ear is a presentation and approval of the final audit.
Delineates the nature of the engagement, which is the audit of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. It refers to the original contract under which the audit was done. Significant accounting practices, including policies, estimates, and disclosures. In the current year, there were no changes to your significant accounting practices, which is a little unusual lately. Each year seems like the gage, you have come up with something new, which has to do with the allowance for doubtful accounts. The liability for your post-employment benefit, which is your health insurance that you pay for your retirees. The accumulated depreciation, which is the estimate of the length of the life of the assets that is owned by the county and used in the operations. And then the final one is the pension liability, which is based on an actuarial study. The next two sections delineate audit adjustments. The first section is the audit adjustments that were looked, that we determined or found during the course of the audit and recommended that the finance staff book, which they did, uncorrected the statements, delineate some smaller entries that were convenience or because management deemed them to be immaterial were not made. And we believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinions. Turning the page, in our opinion, based on our audit and the report of other auditors, which is the auditors that audit your economic development commission are done by another audit firm. The financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, the component units, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funded information of the county, the required supplemental information about the pension and the OPEB, and your budget to actual, which is presented in some detail on the back of the financial statement for the general fund, and the special education fund, both of which are budgeted major funds. And then it also refers to the supplementary combining schedules that are in relation to the basic financial statements fairly stated. And then there is a separate court required by the court's administration, and that again is fairly stated in relation to the basic financial statements.
Did you understand your statement about the Economic Development Division?
The Economic Development Commission and the library are both what is called discreetly presented component units. They are legal entities on their own behalf, but they are in some way connected closely or dependent on, and there's a, you know, there's an algorithm of how that is determined. But both of them get most of their, their funding from the county. They're in, definitely in the case of the library, their organism, their board is appointed by, you have ultimate control over who that board of directors is. So, that makes it a discreetly presented component unit that is required to be included in these financial statements. Murdoch Associates here in Orangeburg performs that audit, and they are included in here. We did the audit of the library.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Accept approval of the audit report?
I'm sending.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ray Fabelas, second by Mr. Billy Oins, that we accept the approval of the audit report. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Item nine is appointment of board commissioner and committee's appointment to Orangeburg County Disability Special Need Board.
Mr. Chairman, that is a request to appoint Ms. Glenda Lewis from Orangeburg to the Disability and Special Needs Board, and I think that is, she is the representative of District Six.
If you have it in here, could I get a motion and a second?
I move that we accept Glenda Lewis to the position on the Disability and Special Needs Board.
I get a second. Second. Moved by Ms. Fabelas, and second by Mr. Ravenell, that we accept Ms. Glenda Lewis on the Disability and Special Needs Board. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. He is appointed to the Orangeburg County Development Commission Board of Directors.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. There is a request to add Mr. Reverend Samuel Glover. He is a representative and presented to the council for approval by District Five.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we, that the council accept the appointment of Reverend Samuel Glover.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Ms. Billy Oins, that we accept the appointment of Reverend Samuel Glover to the Development Commission. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Item ten is the voice for executive session, and executive session from the Economic Development update for Project Glass, Project Hunter, Project Creek, Project Recycle, Project Western OC, Project GG Site, Project Power Site, Project Matthews Product, Western Orangeburg County, Project GG Site, Project Power Site, and Project Matthews Industrial Park.
Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a motion and second, that we go in executive session for those?
I shall move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Oins, and second by Ms. Smith or Ms. Fabelas. Yes, sir.
And then we have some interns. I know. Okay.
We have some interns with Orangeburg County Council with District One, to be Joshua Ravenell.
Why you first, Joshua?
My name is Joshua Ravenell. I am a sophomore, rising sophomore at Coast Square Mountain University. I'm a major in computer science. Right now, I am currently employed here at the Information Technology Center. You know, I'm enjoying it so far and everything. It's, you know, a great opportunity for me, and I'm learning what all I'm going to be doing for when I go out in my career in the next couple of years, and, you know, hopefully I'll come back next year.
My name is Takiya Gilmore. I'm an upcoming junior at Clemson University. So, any Google ups and downs, give me.
We're all education.
I'm an English major as well, and I'm employed at the fire department, which is on 301. And like Joshua just said, I'm really enjoying my time at the fire department. I'm getting to learn new things, build relationships, so it's a good opportunity.
District Three is Hayden Parker.
Hey, y'all, I'm Hayden Parker. I'm a rising junior at Clemson, too, so go Tigers. I'm a psych major at Clemson. I'm employed at the EMS department, actually, and I'm really enjoying myself. I'm actually deciding to get my EMT certification after, you know, riding all the trucks and everything, and all this stuff, so I'm really enjoying my time, so thankful for the experience.
Council District Four is Amber New.
My name is Amber New. I'll be attending OC Tech in August for nursing, and I'm with the purchasing department. Thank you.
All right, District Five. District Five, Danny Upton.
I'm Danielle Gansler. I'm representing his Jamie Cooper Smith. I'm with the Orangeburg County Natural Disaster Hazmat Team. I'll be an incoming freshman at the University of South Carolina Columbia in the fall, and I'm majoring in nursing. And so far, I'm really having a great time, so thank you, everyone.
Number six, District Six, Mary Watson.
Hello, I am Mary Frances Watson. I'm District Six. I am at the Orangeburg County Library around the corner, and it's been an absolutely wonderful experience, and I've gotten to meet so many people that I never would have met had I not been placed there. So, thank you so much.
And Reverend District Seven, who is not able to hear, Brittany Jackson. She's reporting to Human Resources.
Want to give her a council meeting, meeting by herself.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two things on behalf of the interns who are doing some exceptional work, so I'm proud to say that our school districts in Orangeburg County are putting out some phenomenal young people, and I also would like to thank all of the department heads who have taken the time to work with these individuals and young people, try to give them a head start when it comes to their career. So, hopefully, we'll see them back again as regular employees, and we have a track record of that. We have several employees over the years that started out as interns, and when college came back, and now work for the county. So, it's a good program, and we commend you for council for allowing us to do it each and every year.
I want to ask our attorney, what progress has been made in laying the groundwork for the human relations council?
I have to, one of the junior county attorneys, Mr. Keisha Jeffrey, and she is just about complete the ordinance to bring back to you so you can start the process of doing your regions.
It's been a year.
Yes, sir. But she, she has to continue.
Any other comments or questions?
One more, Mr. Chairman. Just like to thank the finance department and the comptroller, and everybody involved working with the audit. And as you can see, the auditor has said we're going in the right direction from a standpoint of quality of staff and quality of work, so we hope to continue that trend and get it done each year in a better and more timely manner.
Thank you. Again, I guess from council, we thank you all. Yes, sir.
Mr. Melzger, I know that we changed the way that we do the landfall commission. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, sir. We, through the, through the new individuals that have come together, the forfeit land commission has allowed us to treat it more so like real estate agencies or like. So, instead of having to come in and know how to navigate the process of going to the auditor or the treasurer or one of the ones who are on the forfeit land commission, now we go out and proactively post the properties with signs that say, "Orangeburg County, if you're interested in that real estate, make a bid." So, there's phone number on that sign. The citizens are able to call the number and place a bid on that property, and we open the bids, and the winning bid wins. That has allowed us to take a lot of the property that's been sitting out on the forfeit land commission list and get that back on the active accounting rolls from a standpoint of having taxes paid on it. It also helps from a standpoint of better control and community development, because some of these lots are lots that have been just sitting there and need to upkeep maintenance and what have you, and once neighbors and people who are in those communities see those signs and find the ability to be able to purchase those properties, they have gone and done that, and we have seen the uptick in them taking those properties down and making them back into productive properties. So far this fiscal year, we have been told that from the bid that we have garnered, we have gained $200,000 worth of taxes as far as selling those forfeit land commission properties and getting them back into actual.
I may go first.
Yeah, 'cause I want to thank you for going to that system, because a lot of time, an individual likes to purchase a piece of property, but they don't know about it until after you went through the process of, like, who of us paid that, or team effort?
Over here, but. How many pieces of property? Then after you're, then you're.
Right down the forfeit land commission fluctuates between 200 and, I'd say 180 and 220 something properties on the list.
How many have we sold so far?
We've sold with the last bidding round, I know we've sold at least 75, 80 of them, and probably more, just don't know how many bids.
And all this took place in the last several months.
We started the process probably about a year or a half ago, then it stopped, but now we got it, got it back started, and I have to commend the new treasurer, Matt Stokes, who's been a big part of that, because that was part of his philosophy as part of the forfeit land commission, him and Roger Fleck, they've been working together to allow us to do this, because it is really by statute the responsibility of forfeit land commission, but they allowed us to step in and do it this way to make it more convenient for the citizens.
How does a land get to the forfeit land commission? What the process, procedure goes through?
Basically, it's a process of when we have our delinquent tax period, after a person doesn't pay the taxes, it goes into delinquent tax period. Once it leaves the delinquent tax period, we have a delinquent tax sale. Any property that's not purchased at that delinquent tax sale and is on the books after the tax sale, and then reverted to the forfeit of land commission, then that commission is responsible for the land to see about getting it sold.
to see about getting it sold or back over the tax load.
You know, it's a benefit to the county, though. One mill is equivalent to about two hundred fifty thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
So if you got a hundred, how many thousands is it?
It was two hundred, two hundred thousand in prime, because we still get the bids.
And the dollars.
Yeah. It's supposed to be a mill of taxes that would be saved by doing that.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. National Square. Thank you all for all your inputs. Again, thank you all for attending our meeting tonight. Could I get a motion and second for journey?
Open the music. Second.